Good night to all ladies and gentlemen here this evening. Now, I'm just hearing myself. My job this evening is actually to welcome all of you here. We are here to discuss the ban on the importation and the use of single-use plastics. Now, I will set the tone this evening for any discussion that might ensue. Now, one thing that I want to impress on most of you is that I've been hearing sometimes through the media about this ban and things like that. But one has to recognize that this ban on the importation and the use of single-use plastics and styrofoam, that ban is not a Barbados thing. It is very international and global, very global. As far as they're concerned, Barbados is actually one of the last to be imposing a ban like this. They're definitely the last to be imposing a ban like this. People have recognized the importance of the environment. I'm talking about both sea and land, knowing fully well that the environment has an impact on our health. It also had an impact on our economy. And therefore, the need to protect the environment. Plastic and styrofoam tend to be, I would say, enemy to the environment. One of the things that I recognize is that people just indiscriminately dispose of this material, it gets into our water, as it leach down through the, into the aquifer. They thought things that in it. It stifle fish. You know, we'll be talking all about these things. And I would say it stifles the economy, the environment, and everything like that. When I think of plastic, I always think of there is a kind of label, and what's the labels that you've had? Plastic said, "Keep it away from children." Because it could strangle children. We've got to keep it away from our environment, because it can strangle our environment. You know, and that is something that we need to look at, the blue economy. And why this was placed in the Ministry of the Blue Economy is that the blue economy, dealing with the sea and the resources of the sea. We cannot stand back and see our sea, which we will, I will say, contribute significantly to the sustainable development of the country. We can't stand back and see it destroyed. So, that is why it was placed within the ministry. We need to protect our, we need to protect one of our greatest resources that will be contributing to ours, our economy. One thing that I must also say is this form a kind of a part of a wider, the banning of plastics, of single-use plastic, form part of a wider strategy for our protection, because there are other pollutants that get into the environment and destroy the environment and again destroy our economy. One of the worst things that I hate to see, for example, is driving behind a minibus or vehicle. And you've got to be ducking because some person, I was trying to search for a word that it would not, so I will use the word "person," just trick you in there, you know? And that is ridiculous. I don't understand why people would do something like that. The same way that you try to keep your home clean, I feel you should keep Barbados clean. Your waters, the land, and everything.
This is the first of two town hall meetings. There will be another one held next week, Wednesday, at the Lloyd Erskine Sanford Complex. And next, we will have a contribution from Najla King, Maritime Consultant, Legal Consultant, Ministry of Maritime Affairs and the Blue Economy. And she will be reviewing the app.
Good night to everyone. The Control of Disposable Plastics Act was drafted in response to the plastics pollution issue. The legislation is very specific as to the plastics that, as to the plastics that are banned. The specifically banned plastics are food containers such as cups, plates and egg trays, and cutlery used in the retail and culinary industry such as forks and knives and spoons, the reason, and stirrers and straws. The reason why these particular items were singled out is because they are most commonly found among marine litter and they pose grave threat to the marine environment. They leach chemicals into the environment which can invariably impact our human health. Maybe conch and fish, for example. What we hope to achieve from this ban is to prevent, reduce, and control plastics pollution in the environment, encourage greater usage of ecologically sustainable alternatives, and to promote recycling. What has been of a grave concern is what is exempted. I would like to say that plastic bags under the app, those are exempted. A lot of people have been having a lot of concerns about those. But these plastic bags that we can still use are like those used in agriculture for pharmaceuticals, medicinal purposes, and for food preservation such as the egg trays used for chicken. The legislation is a major milestone in an environmental effort by the ministry to protect our marine environment, to promote economic development in the blue economy, which can only be achieved if we maintain the health of the marine ecosystem. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Plastic is everywhere, from the visible plastic blowing on the side of the road to the invisible plastic in our clothes, in our food, and in our water. There are seven types of plastic. Many of these contain toxins and chemicals that have been linked to cancer, disruption in our endocrine system, and even lowering sperm count. Is this what you wish to continue eating out of? It is estimated that eight to 12 million metric tons of plastic waste makes its way into the world's oceans every year. Every minute, one truckload of plastic is entering the world's oceans. This is not just a problem that is happening in the US or the UK, but something that is happening right here in Barbados as well. In 2017, Barbados imported over, sorry, in 2017, Barbados imported over 100 million individual plastic bags. That's enough plastic to wrap around the island 368 times. In the same year, we also imported 150,000 pounds of plastic cups. So picture 43 ZR vans filled with plastic cups. We also imported 140,000 pounds of plastic straws. That's the weight, nine 40-foot containers. So we have a lot of plastic in Barbados. When we throw plastic away, there is no such thing as a way. It must go somewhere. And often, that somewhere ends up being our water, in our food, and in our soil. Quite often, plastic is thrown by the side of the road. It enters our gullies, it gets into our drains, blocking the drains and sewage systems, leading to increased flooding. Much of the plastic waste enters the ocean, as I mentioned before. This isn't really working very well. Okay, that one. That's good, thank you. It is estimated that by 2050, there will be more plastic than fish by weight in our oceans. And chances are, if you're eating fish, you're eating plastic too. I'm not saying to stop eating fish, but what I am saying is to stop polluting our sea with plastic. The huge impacts of plastic pollution on our ocean are linked to fisheries. They're also linked to associated coastal activities. Many of us go to the beach. You don't like to see a beach that looks bad and polluted with plastic. So much of the plastic, as I mentioned, gets into the ocean. It enters seabirds, marine mammals, and many other species. Plastic, as we mentioned, acts as a host for other chemicals such as toxins and metal. So when we're eating fish, we're probably eating plastic too, as I mentioned, and other metals. And to me, this is quite an alarming fact. So Barbados prides itself on being a country that has pristine sparkling clear waters and clean beaches. But there is no beach that you can go to today in Barbados that does not have some form of plastic pollution on it. The global cost of plastic pollution to our environment has recently been estimated at 2.5 trillion US dollars per year. So the cost to our health, to our environment, and to our economy of plastic pollution is extremely high. So as individuals and consumers, we can play a part. The ban is a great first start. But what the ban signals for me is a greater conversation surrounding waste management. It takes you and me as individuals to play our part. We need to start looking at how we can refuse items, how we can reduce, and how we can choose reusable if possible. So let's start with you and I. Our choices matter. Thank you.
Mark Hill, Industrial Designer with the Design Council. And in his presentation, he'll be letting us know about the bio-based alternatives, what the public and vendors must know. Give it up for Mark Hill.
Okay, good night, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, I'm here to present on bio-based alternatives, what the public and the vendors must know. All right, the first thing that we want to establish is that we are following a particular timeline as far as how the strategy is being rolled out. And the other points, the first three points, basically, we are there. Where April the first, effectively, the importation of petrol-based plastics such as polystyrene, polypropylene, and polyethylene are effectively banned for use as far as single food service products are concerned. So where we are right now, we are looking at the 4th, looking at the 4th of Ju-, uh, 1st of July, sorry, 2019. And at that point, that is where the vendors will be transitioning fully from petrol-based food service containers to bio-based food service containers. Yeah, they're gonna do that right now. Okay. Oh. Good. Okay, so petrol-based means it's coming from petroleum. Petroleum is the feedstock. All the polymers, polysters that make different plastic products come from petroleum. But bio-based is polymers and polysters coming from natural sources, and fibers and composites coming from natural sources as well. So it is natural sources, can be bagasse, cigarette leaves, could be corn, wheat. Any form of biomass that grows naturally in the environment can be used to produce both composite fibers and blends, or can be used to produce biopolymers as well. All right? So, as the vendors go forward, we are setting a new standard. A new standard not only in relation to the environment, but also in relation to our health, as Nicola has pointed out. Because the reality is, the petrol-based products, while we may not have taken note of it, example, when you put a hot piece of fish and chips inside of a polystyrene with hot oil, any of y'all ever notice how it burns through sometimes? When we're not burned through, that releases toxins into the food itself. So we're transitioning from an unhealthy form of packaging to a more healthy form of packaging. But naturally, it behaves different, okay? All right? So these are the standards that we have benchmarked so far. The BPI composting standard and the ESTM standard. So we've used these two standards to help govern how we are going forward as far as selecting bio-based products is concerned. All right? Material performance, naturally, it behaves different. So, as I did my interviews with vendors and stuff like that on the street, some vendors were shocked to know that the products are actually made out of sugarcane bagasse. So one of the things that's happening in our minds is that we're thinking that the styrofoam, the traditional styrofoam that we've been using, we expect this replacement to behave the exact same way. But that's not going to happen, because once we change the materials, the mechanics of the materials is also going to behave different. So in terms of bio-based materials, they're going to behave different in relationship to moisture, texture, weight. They're going to be a lot heavier because you're dealing with denser fabrics. The heat transfer is going to be different. But yesterday, when I went to buy some food just to do a test, and the vendor was saying, "It feels hotter than the styrofoam," because the styrofoam kind of insulates. We also use them to help insulate when we're drinking coffee and stuff like that as well, too. So the products are going to behave different. So you've just got to be cognizant of that as a vendor. That mean you're putting in your food, into it is not going to behave like a styrofoam tray. All right? Also, heat tolerance is going to be different. As a natural fiber, it's going to breathe. So you might see maybe some buckling happening initially, but it's not going to lose its form because of the mold that it has. All right? But the product would behave a little different from the thing. The other thing that impacts on it, sorry, let's go back, is the environmental conditions as well, because it is bio-based. But it is this very thing that we need to work cognizant with the environment. So you can't, as my grandmother is telling me after, you can't suck can and whistle too. All right? So, what that means is that you cannot expect to save the environment and have the type of materials that would work for the environment, and at the same time, expect it to behave like the petrochemical product. So something has to give, all right? But this is a good, this is a good direction. And then finally, microbial activity. So I got these images from Caribbean Eco-Rear, and they're showing how their particular container composted down over a 73-day process. This began in August, August 23rd, and by October 20, trying to remember the date, 21st. Yeah, it was backed down to just normal mud. All right, next slide. All right, well, this is a traditional complaint, might put in this house. Leaking. I got a Facebook post this morning. "Mark Hill, what was these containers you bring about here? Look at my food, there's all these Liverpool fans." You get one today, right? But to be honest with you, I took some of these containers and examined them, put them up against your leg, and there's a particular container that has come in that the microns are very, very thin. I'm talking about sugarcane bagasse container. I mean, you put it up to like, you can actually see holes in it. So that manufacturer or that importer really needs to revisit it. But I've also eaten my lunch in a bagasse container, in a bagasse container yesterday. And I tell you, I drenched my food in gravy. How many like real gravy? Right? Jeez, oh thanks, well, I'm sure. I like my gravy minister. So I drenched it in some gravy, just to make sure that it hold it, and it worked right through. All right? And they also went to Cravings and had my soups and stuff in the, in the, uh... So we've done a full watch, we'll test on what works and what doesn't work, by actually experiencing the actual products. And what we would see is that most of the products that we see on the island do function properly. All right, next slide. So here we've put together, and this is my final point, it's kind of like a guide for vendors, to show them how to select bio-based alternatives. So we have the first line, which is showing you woodware that you can use. And these are reusable, which, by the way, based on the numbers, actually work out to be the cheapest model. Because if you get 10 or 20 use of that particular container, it's actually very low cost in terms of using reusable models. So it depends on how you set up your business. This might be able to work for you. Then we have the traditional snack box, paper-based stuff that we get from KFC, Chefette, Chicken Barn. They deliver the chips and chicken and stuff like that in those boxes. So those paper boxes that are coated with clay, those are very, very appropriate as well. Then we got a paper board, right down to sandwiched containers. Then we have, where are we going to look for a lot of innovation coming out of Barbados? Using the grape seed leaves to actually make some plates here. Palm leaves, and bamboo leaves, and bamboo forks, and stuff like that. And then here, in the middle, where you see those two clam shells, this is where we know getting into the higher import range. And, um, and those products, some of them may come with a little blend to help waterproof the, and grease-proof the container. And that has a standard set to it, the BPI standard. And, um, what we're recommending is that those don't be over 100 parts per million. And then we have the fiber-based products with PLEA coating on them. Then full PLEA plastics, and then CPLA. And CPLA means crystallized polylactic acid, right? What it means is that it has chalk or charcoal in it. Chalk to keep it white, charcoal to make it black. And these are all 100% bio-based, all right? So we're looking at shape in a bio-based future is going to be better for the environment in more than one way, not just the ocean, but as it relates to the landfill. It's also going to be better for our physical health as well. And we will work out the pocket issues as we go forward.
This is not going to be a full presentation in as much as this is a conversation. And I feel as if I have to use this opportunity really to set a few things straight about where we stand as a ministry and where we're going. You could see that we haven't just wake up one morning and decided to do this. There's been a lot of thought put into this. I want to thank all the distributors who are here. I know Eco-Rear is here, Simplax is here, Fergus is here, Packaging Center, I see there, and who else is here? Anyway, I want to thank all the distributors. I want to thank Barvin for coming out. I want to thank all of y'all for spending time with me this evening. All the persons who are here on the panel, the press, everybody. So when we started this plastic ban, the conversation really started in, we won the government in May. I was assigned the ministry late May. By July, we started having conversations around the need to ban the plastics. I must also say this is not, we weren't the first government in Barbados to start the conversation. The conversation was actually started by the former government in 2016. Many people seem to forget that Minister Lo had announced on May 11th that there was going to be a ban in Barbados on all single-use plastics. That was two, three years ago now. So we weren't the first government to say it, but we are the first to do it. The point that I'm making is that this conversation started a long, long time ago. Where we won the government in, in June, in May, and I was appointed in early June when we started meeting. By July, we started having meetings around where do we want to take this blue economy? What are we going to do in relation to our position on the single-use plastics? And so the conversation started in July. The Prime Minister made the announcement of the ban on single-use plastics in September. And I'm giving you this history because I want to set everything in context, because I know the issue is time and so on. The Prime Minister made the announcement in September that we were doing a ban on single-use plastics. I followed up a few days after and said we were going to do a ban on single-use plastics. And she announced April 1st. When we started the conversation initially, we wanted the ban in January, to be truthful with you. Because so strong was our position in relation to how dangerous these single-use plastics are on our environment, that we were very much set with a desire to make wrong things right. Of course, it doesn't work that way. We are governing for everybody. So we determined that we would, having spoken to most of the distributors, move the ban date from January to April. The reason that was done was to give, because the distributors, the large distributors, for the most part, whom we'd met, and we met with the distributors, we met with the Manufacturers Association, we met with the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, we met with a number of people. We didn't just determine that this was the way it was going to be. They said they needed six months, we gave six months for the importation and the retail, wholesale, and use in Barbados. Since then, I announced an extension to July 1st to give people more time to get, to use up the stock. The truth is, when we made the extension, my driving force was not so much the distributors, I must say. It was really the vendors, they said so in Parliament. Because a lot of vendors were unaware that as of April 1st, they wouldn't have the capacity to use the containers as well. And many of them innocently bought the containers and then found themselves with the stock. But we gave the extension until July 1st for everybody. That is no nine months. I know people are asking me, some people have asked about an extension, and I have to ask a question like, how much time is enough time? Now, when it came to the vendor, they saw a very naughty article in the press. And the article suggested that somehow I gave a stern reprimand to vendors and suggested that if they buy cheap, they get cheap. And, you know, the article completely misrepresented what we said. And let me say basically what our position was then and what it is now. And I must also say that I spoke to the person who wrote the article, and he subsequently told me that the editor, I can't say deliberately, but he certainly misrepresented what he said. What he meant to say and certainly what I said. The position is this, in relation to the containers. I have labored long, and they would tell you, there's nobody in the ministry that could say otherwise, that for every single meeting we have, my one concern are the people who would have to go out there, try to make a living, hustle on the street. I mean, I've been driven, it kept me up at night, to be truthful with you. Needless to say, to see the article was kind of disappointing. But when we started having the conversations in the ministry, it was always, how do we get the vendors involved so that they understand what we're doing first of all? And that the vendors are in a position, when the ban comes, to have not only the best information, but access to the best containers, the containers that work, and so on and so forth. If we zoom out and we go to the distributors, I also feel as if we spent so much time talking to the distributors. And to the extent that everybody we met with said that they had already started bringing in the alternatives. So we knew the alternatives were here. And the concern that most of them had was in relation to the cost. People have said the government needs to relax the duties on the containers. The truth is, the duties on these containers are already very low. In many cases, the duties are lower than the duties on some of these styrofoams. Some of it is 5%, this styrofoam used to be 20%. But a lot of people brought in the containers from in the region, so they got the containers duty-free. The unit cost, however, and the cost of shipping a lot of these containers is extremely high. That is the reality. And no matter how we spin it, these containers cost more than the containers that are made of styrofoam and so on. But the cost to the country overall is so much more for those containers that we use. Barbados has a position where we created the Ministry of Blue Economy with a simple view that we wanted to state our claim on the world and in the Caribbean and here, that we are a country that cares significantly about the environment. You may not be aware, but a lot of the international conversation that is occurring now in the developed world, in relation to the developing world, almost excludes a lot of the realities that we face. I mean, we're having conversations about coral and what degrees of heat the sea should be allowed to raise. Whenever it raises, it affects all of us, so that we have to have more serious conversations. I feel that if we're going to insert ourselves into the world conversation in a serious way... I feel that if we're going to insert ourselves into the world conversation in a serious way, that we have to be very serious in Barbados as well. I feel that we have a responsibility to our children to do not what is convenient, but what is right. The Prime Minister often says that you have to have principles, and that principles only mean something when they are inconvenient for us to stand by them. My view is that during the course of this conversation, and many others, and this is not, I must add, the first conversation we've had with vendors. We, and I don't know how many vendors are actually in here, vendors. There are few. We've spoken to several on the street. We've talked to them as we go along. Mark just told you about the participatory approach he took. We've been having a lot of conversation around this. But I feel as if nine months, and if you feel differently, please let me know. But I feel as if nine months is enough time to move the old stock and that there has to be a point where Barbados then says, okay, that enough is enough. I also hold the view, and that a lot of people are using the vendors for conversation, but most vendors don't buy stock for nine months. Most vendors, I believe, don't have stock for three months. Most of the people who are considered to be very small suppliers, many of them buy their stock week to week, maybe every two weeks, maybe a month, some every day. It depends. But it's unlikely that the conversation around the vendors, that people are saying, oh, look at what you're doing to the vendors. Most of the vendors aren't, don't have old stock. This conversation is really a conversation for wholesalers and distributors, and so on, to the extent that they have stock. I am hopeful, because we were guided by them in the first instance to go to six months. I am hopeful that most of them have been able to get rid of the stock. And if they haven't, that they've been able to get rid of the stock in the three months, the additional three months. The other issue is in relation to the penalties. Now, people have said to me the penalties are too high, fifty thousand dollars. You're going to kill the vendors. But that is the maximum limit. The law is specific, you know? It doesn't mean that if you go and use, I hope, I really hope that you don't, that people make a voluntary decision now not to do it because Barbados shouldn't be governed only by laws. But I feel we should have a moral responsibility towards right in the country. But nobody's going to come, I believe, and say, if you use a styrofoam plate, you're going to pay fifty thousand dollars. I mean, that would be to apply the law in a way that I do not think that was the intention of the law. But within up to fifty thousand dollars, you could have a range of different applications. So you're not, it doesn't mean you're going to be fined fifty thousand dollars. I really hope, however, that we can have a conversation around a voluntary move toward making Barbados safe. And while I talk about the penalties, that is really the last thing that I wish to talk about because I really feel we could do it if we choose to do it together. Now, the last thing is that we have, we've allowed a number of conti... If you think about it, we have banned very, very, very few things. They're very low-hanging fruit. And everything that we've banned, there is an alternative in Barbados, everything. So there's not a case where you can't get a container that you're looking for. It is here. And I've seen, and we've tested, containers we're putting in the sauce, so we don't eat it. We've tested containers with hot soup, which I eat a lot of. We've tested containers with the food that, you know, the Rastaman food. I bought food recently from the Chinese guy, my guy, my friend, I won't call, is in business because I don't want to advertise it. But he told me he recently started using containers and it works. So there are containers here that work. The cost, however, of some of these containers is prohibitive. Now, perhaps we could have a conversation around how best we can help you as a government to be able to address the costs. But as I said to you before, the duties on a lot of these containers are already real low. Like, a lot of them is at five percent. So, and that what is really costly is the unit cost of the individual items that are here. The, some of the containers carry a twenty percent duty, but that is what I believe was the cost of the styrofoam that came from outside of the region anyway. So I feel that we need to have a conversation, a serious conversation about how do we now move forward from here? I also feel that we have the opportunity to talk seriously about indigenous, homegrown businesses that allow young people now to be able to convert some of these PLAs. I know Mark is doing it, to be able to either reuse, recycle, or use it for some other reason. I've seen people take their, like Eco-Rear just showed me, they took their containers and put them in the garden and without a commercial compost. And in a few months, they've been able to buy a degrid. Because I feel at the end of the day, we really have got to stand for something. I feel that nine months now is enough time. I feel that the persons who are, to my mind, who need the most attention in this whole process, I mean, everybody does because that's how we govern, but the vendors, who I feel perhaps we may not, and I apologize if we haven't communicated in as much detail as we should have, because we should have. And that over the next few days, we will. I've even asked some of the suppliers to make available, in the early days, some of the containers to the vendors so that they have access to the containers. But the truth is, as Mark said, these containers cannot do what styrofoam did. These containers also will not destroy the environment in the same way that styrofoam did. So as I close, the question that you must ask and answer is, what is the real cost of continuing to use these single-use plastics? And having considered the real cost of using these single-use plastics, what are we, as a people and as a government, prepared to give up for the interests of our country? And I don't mean to come here and preach to anybody, but that's the truth. But I feel as if this matter is of so much significance that we have to find a way to push past the inconvenience. Barbados is now among fourteen countries in the region, I think, that have done a ban on single-use plastics. Barbados is, so we're not the first. And across the world, everybody's doing it. If you Google it, almost daily, somebody's adding to it. Everybody who's done a ban has gone through a period, a transitional period, everybody, where it became a little bit inconvenient in the first instance. We are hopeful that because we've been able to learn from some of the others and we have the containers say that our inconvenience will be less. But can I say to you honestly, there is not going to be inconvenience? No. Can I say to you, or should I even try to say to you that these containers will do what the others did? No. But do I believe strongly in what I am doing? Yes. I believe very, very strongly in my heart that this is the right thing. If it is that the process has bothered people, let us have a conversation around how do we improve the process? The truth is, I believe now we've gone to nine months. I know people are going to ask for, as already has happened, a further extension in the ban. But let's talk about it and see how tonight goes. Thank you.